Hey, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Please rise for the flag salute.
I believe in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For meeting minutes from May eighth twenty twenty four. I'll move to approval of working minutes for May eighth twenty twenty four. I'll second. There's then a motion made in second hand. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The approval of meeting agenda.
I'm going to put in purple meeting agenda.
Second.
An emotion made in seconded. Is there any discussion?
Is there any changes?
No, no post-changes.
Is there any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda.
Move the approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second. When a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion items, have summer projects, Mr. Monroe.
So we're gearing up for summertime. We're just kind of been up. It's not like we want everybody to go home, but we kind of wanted to. We do a lot of work in the summer. Uh, the bulk of our work is the floors. We strip. Strip down the wax and re-wax. Uh, so I kind of have the list here.
How long does that usually take you guys to do it?
I mean, it it goes throughout the summer, so you just kind of like.
The whole summer.
Yeah, you kind of, you have to work around. People that come in and stuff like that, so we have. Like at the middle school, we have places people have asked us to start first and things like that. There's different programs, so. It's a mess. I mean, you sand it, dust goes everywhere, you suck it up. We should set up the fire alarm a few times. It's it's a fun time. Um, but that's, uh. The materials to do all that's about eight thousand dollars and we we do that. Mainly to protect the tiles on the floor and to seal. Seal the floor. So it looks really great when it's done. The kids scuff it up in no time, but it's actually purposes, it's to uh protect the floor. And then it also has like a micro band, um antimicrobial net. So it's pretty good for germs not living on it and stuff like that. The bleacher backstop maintenance, we have a company come in every year and do that. That's a mandatory insurance deal. Um, they check all the hoops, run them up and down the uh. The bleachers. And we have had them do the ones out in Davisville and substitute, so. They go through everything, make sure we're safe and then help advise us on leaving repairs. Uh, the gym floor, we do the. The wood floors, we have that done. Um, every year. And that's important to. We can't, we can only sand that floor like half of it at the high school. We can only sand it like one more time, so.
Before we have to refinish it?
Well.
Or?
Half of that floor isn't, is a lot newer than the other guy.
Right, because one of them.
And uh, so like I say, somebody decided we wanted to repaint the gym floor, so we sanded it down. I wouldn't advise that. Because we don't have like one more time. It's getting thin, I guess. That's what I was told when I started AICAF, me going to. Let me know, never sand the floor, you don't have to. Um, fire alarm testing. It's done every year. That's by outside contractor. Carpet shampooing, we still do have quite a bit of carpet in the elementary. Would love to start working that outlook system. Getting rid of all the carpet. But I think it's. Probably around six grand of room to get rid of carpet. Touch-up painting. This, I mean, always wall stuff, kids like to put their feet on the wall, so you get a lot of low scuff marks on everything. So we, as we go around, we find stuff that needs touched up, we'll touch it up. And then we usually try to take on a couple rooms each summer too, just to keep the rotation going. Air filters. It's pretty self-explanatory. We change those twice a year. Uh, like grounds, equipment, maintenance and repair. Um, I threw kind of a high number on there because we typically break stuff in the summertime. We're running sprinklers, mowers, all kinds of stuff. We get a lot of workout uh in the summertime. Heat control. We're kind of waiting for the kids to get out of here too, so we can start taking care of some of the. Grass popping up through the ground and whatnot. This year, we're going to remove that. The play bus from the kindergarten playground. It's kind of be been deemed unsafe. So that's coming out. Uh, this is all playground stuff here. This list doesn't look like in any particular order. We're gonna, you know, re-level the wood chips on the playgrounds. Make sure everything's safe for the kids. Uh, the athletic fields, we usually, I think we've already started to fertilize, but we usually fertilize and overseed. The gravel driveways. Will be. Replained. And that also helps remove the grass that's coming through. Uh, we got a lot of gutters to clean. Uh, moss removal on roofs, deep clean restrooms. Uh, top-down clean all classrooms, so the waxing makes a huge mess, like I said, with dust and everything, so the. We like to get that done as early as we can and then go back through. And start cleaning the rooms from top down. I need to repaint some parking lots and water lanes this year. Uh, I got some copper water lines in the high school. Uh, that we've had to. Kind of bandage through the year. There are ones that you have to shut down the entire water to the school to fix. Uh, so I have a. An area that I'm going to be working with, it's the one that goes. Um, it heads over toward the girls locker room from above the concession area there.
Are they currently leaking or?
They just develop pinholes in the copper, and so I have already replaced a bunch of, um. Like a PEX. And that's, that's what we do. We don't put copper back, so.
You could just put X line?
Huh?
It's just like to.
PEX, yeah, but I have like. This one section that comes all the way over to right above it. And then there's like that far down to a. To a valve. And I'm just getting pinhole after pinhole.
It just keeps going.
Absolutely, yes. Um, but that's, I think the watering hole is a lot better. It used to be fairly acidic. They're doing something to it. I would make it that way, but these guys are old. So. And we do have copper throughout. And that's just kind of where they're, I think, on that particular line because it has a pump and it's a cirque pump, that's why we're getting it. Uh, the middle school gutters on the south walls, I don't know if you've ever. Stood at the bottom of the field and looked up and seen how high that is. Um, there's some issues there I need to look at. I'll be honest with you, I'm scared to go to that edge from the roof, so.
From the, yeah, go.
Yeah, so I mean, I could either tie off and do something, but I just need to get in there and see what's going on. And that was one of the things that they found on the.
Oh, on the facility study?
Yeah, he mentioned that. That we may need to do some exploratory, like. Tear open to see if it's. Done some things, but. Um, I know we took the moss off that roof like. Oh, I think it might have been two years ago now, a year and a half. And. It's not coming back, so we took. Probably a thousand pounds of moss off, which is real easily, it was very heavy. Um, so that's good. Uh, just something, something like that where you just want to make sure you're not causing damage. Uh, let's see. Touch-up painting interior. Uh, we're going to install the two classroom portable to elementary. Everything's on schedule for that. As soon as school gets out, the dirt work's going to start. And then. You know, the trailers will get delivered. They'll put them together. Uh, we're going with the tile floor and then getting everything. Wired in. Intercom and everything we got all summer to do that, so it shouldn't be a problem. Uh.
When's your completion date for that? Portables, do you know? I mean, at least.
I'm not going to quote you that just yet, just because I'm depending on so many different contractors, so the. So the, the dirt work will start immediately. I want to stay. By July, the first weekend of July, the trailers are supposed to actually arrive. But the things. I mean, I could have it to a certain point, but to have occupancy, I have everything, so. It's, there's a lot of like the fire alarm, the intercom, stuff like that. If those guys have issues with getting stuff, whatever. But like I say, I'm putting everything to the front of the summer. That way we have. So my completion date would be first day of school is another thing. And I believe they've ordered furniture. I'm not too great about that, so that the. Elementary is ordering. Uh, we have some drinking fountains. Like in the kindergarten that are outside. That need rebuild, we have. During COVID, we shut all the drinking fountains down, I remember that time. And uh, so there's just like some drinking fountain stuff we need to go through and make sure we get those back up real quick. Uh, the gas duct heaters in the kindergarten, that's actually started today. The contractor was out. Uh, we have, there's like a big main air handler. And two duct heaters that had failed heat exchangers, so they've been on space heater and uh. They actually started that today, so that should go good. We got a lot of teacher moves this summer. I think I've heard of like eleven at the elementary alone, so. I think a lot of our time is going to be spent little boxes for teachers. Not, not gonna lie, that's going to take a lot of labor. Let's see. A-track units, I'm going to go through those myself this year. You know, just belts, see. See if things are wearing out. That might lead to some repairs. To start diving into those pretty deeply. There's a soccer field project going on with the community, so if there's stuff we need to do to help. Build that along, we're gonna, we're gonna do that. That's basically what I have planned. Uh. We have people that do take vacations in the summer. So usually we bring in some extra help labor-wise to. To get all this stuff from. Yeah, and I do have one more project that I. I don't like Lisa about yet. So I'm not going to bring it up here, but I have a. A fun project idea where I could take my whole staff and like have a barbecue, do something outside that would be very nice.
Thanks for the teasing.
And then, yeah, and then I'm always open, like if there's stuff. That comes up, people notice they want added. We're, we're usually pretty open to dealing with stuff. Yes, have other questions?
Ooh, maybe not. We appreciate the busy, but productive summer.
What's that?
We appreciate the busy, but productive summer.
Yeah, this is the calm before the storm. Graduation kicks us out. I didn't even put that on my graduation. It's huge. Stressful time for me. I'll get through that and then kick right into. It's fun. I have, we have a lot of fun, so we're looking forward to it.
Thank you, Justin. Hey, fiscal reduction plan, Mr. Nesmith.
We think we hit the fiscal reduction plan through attrition. I think we have the updated detailed spreadsheets in your board packets, but I'm just going to go ahead and do a quick summary. Uh, we have a target rate of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to reduce. Uh, we've done that through. On the current plan, one administrator at the secondary level. Which should be about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And three uh teachers through attrition. One through special education that um is being subsidized by basic ed. And then two specialist positions. Plan being contract allows us to run PE and music to class sizes to larger class sizes. So we would run the PE and music classes, uh, class sizes at the full contracted rate. Uh, which would mean that they would have, the teachers would have two teach student, two classes of students at a time. So instead of just one class. Per rotation, they would have two first grade classrooms, two second grade classrooms would be going into the music and PE. That's how our contract is written, so we would just. Align ourselves to that contract language. Two specialist teachers would be filling in, um, taking up roles into the regular main classroom. At the high school, we consolidated on some split positions. We had two split positions that were consolidating, where it was like ELA and math. Um, we felt that there was capacity to redistribute the students to fill the class sizes larger. So we had two FTE reduction at the high school. So we think that about our average salary is ninety thousand a year with a twenty-eight thousand dollar benefit package. Um, at three of those positions and the one administrative position gives us over the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar mark.
So how? That card, perfect, good. Literally go through every tiny detail on the test.
Yeah. Once I got them rotated right.
Um, positions are great. We posted a elementary or a middle school, uh. English, ELA studies, sixth grade position. Last night, job opened up yesterday afternoon. We showed up at eight AM this morning, eleven applicants. So the large number of reps, I mean, our fiscal situation is nowhere near the same position districts around us are. Um, but we are benefiting from that fiscal impact with, uh. We are benefiting from that and we are interviewing, um. Uh, currently today, we've been interviewing assistant principals, the secondary assistant principal. Administrative restructure, we posted the job prioritizing somebody with math instruction. Our current principal, Tasha Paul, who we know is well-known high school, has a background in ELA. So we posted a job looking for somebody with a background in math. The idea being that we would have spectralized evaluators, so that way Tasha would evaluate ELA, social studies, sixth grade to twelfth grade. And the new hire would evaluate math. And science all the way up. That way we're really focusing on our district priority being on. Really focusing on instruction. How can we support teachers in the classroom to improve instruction that's going on? So we really want to have content area experts as administrators.
I like that plan.
Questions on the fiscal reduction plan. Um, I don't think we need action. You had action before. We're not looking to change the fiscal.
Anybody have any other questions, comments or otherwise? Okay, uh, board recommendation on policy fourteen hundred, meeting conduct, order of business and quorum.
Know a lot of it probably came about because of me, but um. Next year's going to be different and it's always different. And it always rotates. Right now, they've got the schedule is like a Monday, Thursday, and who knows, it could go back and it doesn't really matter. We'll just probably cross.
Well, I'll say, actually, the conversation's been come up every year to move it to Tuesday before you got on the board.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Twenty-two years.
All right, well.
Um, and the issue that happens is, um. It takes two board meetings. To change it, so you have to have first reading and a second reading. So we get to June. We adopt the board agenda, someone says, can we move it to Tuesday? And then we say, it's too late, we should have met on this two board meetings ago. So you have two board meetings in front of you. This is not due to you specifically. Uh, I just want to say to the board, there's two board meetings now, so there's a first reading and a second reading, and if you want to go to Tuesdays. This is today to tell us.
And I know that Candace um had let me know that. By asking the various people, um, Wednesday's really is the day that works best for most cases, so. If we have. If we have the interest of keeping it on Wednesdays, I think we can go ahead and. And. Keep it how it is.
I think a good reason it's been on Wednesdays for so long.
Probably, but it doesn't hurt to have it open just in case things change and.
So that when we're in July and we're like, why is it on Tuesday?
Um, do we need to do an approval of that? I mean, that was just a.
Discussion items, no approval.
Yeah.
This was a, this comes up every year. So we thought that we would put it in for the view before it's too late.
Yeah. Okay, so we have no other input on that. We'll move on to gift donation form.
I am in, where we open for discussing, I would love to see. Personally, I think that. My first comment would be, I think we need to make it. As easy for donate to donors to donate to us as possible and I, um. Without having to reach back out and ask extra questions, I'm like, well, what's this supposed to mean? So I, I feel like I would want the form to read. Very user-friendly. Um. So my suggestion would be to take the Still Valley Valley one and to look at the same, the parts of it. I think this could be combined into one form. I know why they did it separately, but um. I think it needs to have like a clear part one, like it needs to actually have sections to it, so a person can call and say. Hey, I'm confused on part two, not like in this part of the page. So I think a part one would be donor type and contact information. They could select which they are, you know, a box that I'm a booster, I'm a first, we're a private party, et cetera. And I think the part two would be um a donation description. And I think you could still have in there. Both sections, it could be combined, um, uh, it's a gift. Or it's monetary and then they both need to, you know, it's intended use where it's going to go and how it's going to be used for it. I think in that section that we should have a spot for them to. Acknowledge they've read through our. General acceptance criteria, because they should know ahead of time, like there is a criteria, you can't just donate us. Something that will cost more money or whatever else. Um, and then the part three could be the donation recipient and intended use. And the last part would be the donation approval, which is really like the district level, and I think that's where we'd have our acceptance criteria. The district use disclaimer, that's only on one of the forms, but it should be.
It should be on both, yeah.
And then the appropriate signatures. So. I, I feel like you could combine those two because they both, each, I feel like are missing an important part that's on the other one. Um, and.
And get rid of whatever's redundant on one to the other.
Yes.
If there is such a redundancy.
So, um.
The only, only. Yes, only, but all I'd add to that is the, the difference signature. So you're going to have the signatures. All the time for, because you don't need facilities improvement probably all the time. Well, I may have to do.
I, I don't know, I truthfully, I didn't read through the signatures. As far as who would be the difference, because it probably depends on.
Because not only is one just an agreement, the others is a hold harmless agreement. Which is different than a financial, that's why they separated them. Because there's also, I think, a legal reason why they. So you're not held harm, you know, held liable, whereas the financial donation is different because it's not a physical.
You know, it's, it's a different.
So it's kind of three forms in pieces of paper. One form uncovers two pieces, the donation and hold harmless agreement.
Okay, okay.
Right, which do we have a hold harmless agreement for the insurance company?
I believe so.
Yeah, so we probably. Already have one anyway, so we probably were going to have three forms regardless. Because it.
Well, we can actually make it into one form and we can make the form, if they click this area, then they go to this area. You know, so.
I like that prompt anyway, because it covers what it needs to do.
Because with the recent. Building that, that we had on like a hold harmless for the insurance company, right? Yeah, and that was a separate form. Okay, yeah. That's the only reason I bring that up.
Yeah.
I like your idea of getting it all together. I'm just wondering the. Connection between the physical object and the hold harmless contract.
So I think I don't carry the, I would be fine. It still feels like both of these two forms, each are missing something that should. Because whether they give us cash or not, I think they should know what the general criteria is. They should know the. The, the expectations of what the donation should be, right?
Right.
And I definitely think there should be a disclaimer on both of them. That you could use the mon, you could use it for a different, I guess maybe the money you want it be able to use.
I don't know if you can, because if you have a five oh one C three that's donating a specific.
Cash.
That it has to go for what it's for. That's different than a piece of equipment.
So they wouldn't have to have that disclaimer on.
Correct, yeah, I think that's why they got rid of it.
So your idea of being able to just kind of, I'm going to, I'm going to answer the questions and as I go, it's going to pop up the appropriate thing I need to fill out. I like that option.
I think that's why they're different, is because of those reasons, because of, because you know, you have here, right, balance return to donor type. Whereas if the equipment comes, we're not going to return it to them, or you're going to dispose of it or.
But potentially if somebody was donating, um. Five hundred coats.
Yeah.
And we can only give away three hundred of the coats.
Yeah.
That feels like, I, I, I'm, I feel like, so if we, do we give back? Because what if we decided in our own discretion, well, we know SANSUP could really benefit from those codes, so we pass them along.
Right.
And then the donor's like. We don't know, I'm picking kind of facetious thing, but the donor could be like, those coats were not from SANSUP, that school district. Did not treat me well as a human and they should have gone someplace else. You should have told me. So in some way, I almost feel like.
You could give them that option, but it clearly states on this one. I'm not saying that we have to do that. But once it becomes our property, it is solely our property and whatever we do with it after that is.
Our business. Our, our disclaimer that would be on there no matter what, yes. I just think they should have to sign off on that disclaimer. So that we know that they know that they know.
Yeah, that's why I like the verbiage, because it sounds like somebody from. Smart Legal.
Right, that's why I circled, we should say all those sentences. Yeah.
Okay. So, um. I guess that that's what we're recommending is that we, we digest it down into. One workable form that includes all the perks that we need. And just. Mimic as closely as we can to the, you know, Palm Valley, hopefully we're not.
I think it'll be pretty easy. Start looking at, like, we, we as a district don't need, like, on the whole harmless, the, the multiple. You know, entities, it's just like, well, why don't you just say parties involved and then just have them sign it? I don't know why they even have the second.
So we can just string them.
So.
Yeah, I didn't know what that kind of person would have been. We're either going to have boosters or we're going to have other parties, right?
Right. Okay. Okay, Hall of Fame process. Mr. Clark.
All right, so you want to ask us questions? I will tell you this, last year I came and I did a presentation on the athletic part of this, where we're going. And one of the last things that I said probably the last time my project was to get this going to games. And so I have done that. We have a committee and we will meet in June, early June. We got some busy people that are on it. But then we're going to start the process. I did supply. A list of the, or a sheet of the bylaws there. Well, what I was hoping to do is with the committees, go through and go through those bylaws and amend them a little bit. Because what I think we can do with this nomination or a Hall of Fame induction. Is I think instead of having dinner, we can create events with this at halftime of games, which will bring in their family and interest from the community. And as you know, watching our basketball games where we have a little cheer. For the sixty-four team, those created real events that were simple for the community. So I would like to use this. Amend the, you know, it'll be up to the committee to amend the uh. In such a way that we do that.
Are these bylaws from like? You know, yeah, so I was wondering, did this come up kind of when Don Daly started doing a lot of that stuff?
I think they're rituals.
Okay.
I think, yeah. That was given to me by Doug Well.
Okay, yeah. I know he, uh. He put together a pretty cool book for forty. It's got, I think, the whole.
I have, yeah. Helped immensely for the parents.
Yeah. All the statistics.
I love the idea of doing the events way more than the dinner. I think the dinner feels really. Doesn't need to be said. I love the events. It feels much more natural for families to celebrate what is. Kind of more authentically the space that they would. Have been, so. I think that, and it's the right way to. Promote and, you know, bring excitement to a particular game. All of those things, so. That's a great addition.
So maybe we have some inductions for the twenty-four, twenty-five season. I think we can, we have some low-hanging fruit, it's going to be, so.
I mean, when did we stop doing that, like?
I would say it was since Steve Bridges tenure. Right around two thousand ten-ish. There has to be a certain. There has to be a certain amount of lifetime between the graduation date and this, so.
Still significant amount of time not doing anything.
I think June, June was the last of what, '94?
Yeah.
The last in that, yeah.
Will the, in section three, E, F for the inductees, will the individuals or distinguished citizen or coach, will that also include posthumously?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Will it include what? Questions? Thank you.
Well, it's cool to see you coming back. Been a while, been a while. And a lot of people love the bass over the last few years, like, you know, they walk through the gym and they see all the plaques and stuff and they're like, whatever happened to that? It's just the same thing, you know? One or two people that were leading it are gone and now we got to pick up the torch.
I will say this is a speculation, but I was on two Zoom meetings today with two different companies that sell virtual boards.
Yeah.
So you just touch, you know, you see a fan off his face and you touch it. That's about, so.
Cool, cool. It'd be cool to see, see what you come up with.
Yeah, longstanding, there's some coaches turned out of my That's why
Okay, does anybody else have any more questions or otherwise? Okay, I think everybody's pretty excited about this. So thank you. And we are going to move on then to public comment. Do we have anybody register for public comment? Anybody here need to make a public comment? We'll be ready. Can finish business. Approval of policy 5315, garnishment and personal credit problems, second reading.
I'll move the approval policy 5315, garnishment, personal credit, on the second reading.
I'll second that.
And a motion made in seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of policy 5400, personnel leaves, second and final reading.
I'll move for the approval of policy 5400, personal, personnel leaves, second and then final reading.
Second.
Then a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of policy 5401, sick leave, second and final reading.
I'll move for the approval of policy 5401, sick leave, second and final reading.
I'll second that.
Then a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of policy 5404, family, medical, maternity, with a second and final reading.
Move to approve policy 5404, family and medical and maternity leave, second and final reading.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
It's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of policy 5407, military leave, second and final reading.
I'll move for the approval of policy 5407, military leave, second and final reading.
I'll second that.
Then a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of policy 5408, jury duty, second and final reading.
Move for approval of policy 5408, jury duty, second value.
I'll second.
And a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of policy 5409, unpaid holidays for a reason of faith or conscience, second and final reading.
I'll move for the approval of policy 5409, unpaid holidays for a reason of faith or conscience, second and final reading.
I'll second that.
Then a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of policy 5410, holiday, second and final reading.
There's a question on Sundays, the last one that we investigated and the conversation came up is that the Sundays were existing with impact.
Yes.
So that's why the Sundays are listed to keep us compliant.
Yes, and it said that she'll move it back up to the top where it belongs, but it was part of policy.
Now, is that our policy?
It's part of
Well, the, the, it was a template, but the Sunday brings us in alignment with, with the WAC, Washington.
It's just strange because out of all the ones that I looked at, multiple districts, nobody had Sunday. So I'm not saying that's right or wrong. I was just confused why we are the only ones that had Sunday. I guess we're the only ones that are right. So we're going to go.
Follow the law. Okay. So with that, you have a motion.
I move for the approval of policy 5410, holiday, second and final reading.
I'll second it.
Then a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of policy 5411, staff vacation, second and final reading.
I'll move for the approval of policy 5411, staff vacation, second and final reading.
Second.
Then a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of policy 6022, minimum fund balance, second and final reading.
I'm moving the approval of policy 622, minimum fund balance, second and final reading.
I'll second.
Then a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of policy 6114, gifts and donations, second and final reading.
I'll move for the approval of policy 6114, gifts or donations, second and final reading.
Second.
Then a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Lot of policies.
Looking into that. It's weird.
Okay, new business approval of donation of 2,500 from GGHI for Skills USA and FBLA National Straddle.
Move for the frivol donation of $2,500 from GGHI for Skills USA and FBLA
I'll second.
Then a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That's really kind. Okay. Parts enrollment.
See, we're holding steady. We are at 1547 as far as ALE and basic ed with our open doors programs. We're servicing an additional 53 students onsite and 9.88 in traditional kindergarten. There we have 57.27 out and running start, but it brings us to about just over 1,630 students being served physically on our campus.
Great. Budget report.
And you're going to have the budget reports. The one thing I did want to know is you're going to see a jump in the fund balance to do with April taxes coming in? That's normal in April. This means every June.
If you're disliked.
Any questions on the financial?
Not certain what the state laws on purchasing Powerball tickets would be.
Well, the state might look the other way because some of the money is going back in to the
Like, complex interest. You know, whether questions are otherwise. Okay, we are going to then at this time move into what?
We don't want to hear from anyone.
All right, Chris.
I'm going to go through tomorrow night is the ESD 113 award starting tomorrow. We're recognizing our PTA. Just the work on the donation of some facility projects, the walk and trail. And now with the new interdual kind of redoing, our entry to the landlord building, we're really trying to improve the face value of our campus. And we met with our different community groups. PTA really stepped up and said, hey, we really think we can support improvement of the face, you know, kind of the, the look of our campus. So PTA is our community partner of the year. Excited to celebrate them and we'll be at the ESD tomorrow. They'll be recognized in front of all the area superintendents and districts.
Great.
I just want to piggyback real quick. Also, just reminder that tomorrow at 2:30, they're having the state send off for bass pitch and track.
I appreciate their
And St. Gulf.
And then, and golf today, it looks like two of the girls are advancing to the second day.
Do we know who?
It appears Olivia Moore and Sophia. I'm not sure what Sophia's last name.
Hamilton.
Hamilton, right, yeah.
That's great. Good for them. Okay. So we will move into executive session to review the performance of a public employee for collective bargaining. We're going to plan for 30 minutes with no action.
We'll plan to leave at seven, 11.
Righty. Thanks, everyone. That was a good short one, huh? I didn't hit 615, but
...
Like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
It's been a motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
The meeting adjourned.